All right. I call the November eleventh, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Harris Township Board of Supervisors to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we actually start this meeting with a public hearing on proposed ordinance three seventy-one, home-based business regulations. Anybody want to read that?
At the June tenth, the twenty twenty-four board meeting, a proposed ordinance was reviewed that would replace the home occupation regulations and the zoning ordinance with both no-impact and low-impact home-based business regulations as recommended by the Harris Township Planning Commission. The no-impact section is mandated by the municipality's planning code, and the language for such is consistent with that in the MPC. The low-impact section is a layer added at the request of the board for those home-based businesses that have little impact on a neighborhood but can't meet the no-impact standards. The board suggested a minor change to the text regarding the definition of a client or customer, which was addressed and directed staff to forward the draft ordinance to the Center Regional Planning Commission for review. CRPC met on September fifth, then discussed the draft ordinance, providing comments that staff addressed in a memo to the CRPA Director, Mike Tilka.
Is there anybody here that would like to comment on that proposed ordinance? Seeing none.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, next we'll go right on to the approval of minutes from October fourteenth, and regular meeting on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four budget meeting.
We'll move on both of the second.
Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you. Um, now it's the time for citizen comments. If there's any members of the public here that would like to comment on anything not on the agenda, um, you have an opportunity now to come to the microphone and introduce yourself, please.
Scott Ferguson, a resident of Harris Township. And I have a comment on the problem that is occurring between Harris Township, the borough, and actually UAJA. The fact that your citizens, which you represent, are going to be paying about eighty thousand dollars a year more for their sewage disposal, because the Borough of State College and UAJA are in a fight as to what is owed. And the borough is not paying, from what I understand, from going on what I've been told by people at UAJA. And I, for one, don't want to pay for the Borough of State College. They had a mediation meeting two weeks ago on Friday. At that mediation meeting, the solicitor for the borough said there's no way that they could before January first make any headway on the decision on this. And I say that this is something that you, as supervisors, should be concerned about. You took an oath to serve the interests of the Harris Township people. And I'm not getting any help. I'm finding that you say it's not a concern of yours. Is that a fact?
I'm not sure it's not a concern. I think it's something we hadn't heard about. My, my hearing from talking to the borough and UAJ is that they settled up between themselves.
And when was this?
About two weeks ago.
That isn't, I talked to Corey a week after the, the meeting, and he said, they said the borough would not be able to get back to him by January first. Thus, we are all getting eight-dollar increase on our sewage bill. At, right after a water increase, electric increase, as we all know, we're all dealing with all of that, and then you get that on top of it. So I think it's a concern. I'm saying, I'm not saying that you shouldn't, you should go up there and raise cane, I'm just saying someone should be writing a letter from supervisors, from Harris Township, saying you need to get this resolved.
I think we need to get a clarification of the issue first. Have you, you get a, through the managers, have you, you discussed that?
Well, we, we were aware of what was sent out to all of the ratepayers. So if you checked your quarterly bill, you all received the same thing that we received.
That includes Harris Township residents.
Well, anybody who's on this public sewer system, so if you're not, you wouldn't have received it. But, uh, that's the extent of really what we as, you know, managers of that have been informed about this, because this is a dispute between the borough and the UAJA. So really, you know, we don't have an ability to, to tell them to solve the issue. I'm sure if there was a way to, to do so expeditiously, it would have happened by now. I think this has been going on for quite some time. As Scott alluded to, there's mediation and, and, you know, things going on between them. So really what we were aware of is just what was sent out to the residents.
And the authority fee of freestanding authority charges a service fee rather than a tax, that's, that's something we don't become involved in with respect to the, the hub charges and all the services that they, that they have.
Right. The extent that the board is involved is you appoint representatives to the UAJA board every, every year, every two years, however long their terms are.
Who is it now?
Uh, it's Matt Aman and Dan Gus.
Okay. Wasn't, wasn't aware of it. Yeah, I'm not on the sewer system, so.
Okay.
I received the notice. I was, I didn't know there was, there was any causal causation from the borough for this, or whether this was just an increase that happened, or is it more of an increase than we would have received? Or have they mentioned, have they actually said that this is an increase because of the borough?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. They're on revenue bonds, so they have to guarantee that they're going to be able to pay those, those revenue bonds.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Correct.
And the only way they can do it is Harris, Ferguson, and College Township, all the residents are paying that extra fee, because the borough has not settled. I don't know who's right, I don't know who's wrong. Okay? And I don't know enough about it, and I, it's not a subject I want to dig into very deeply, okay? But I think it's something that, as supervisors, it would be great as, for the citizens who are going to be paying. I figured there's five thousand, roughly five thousand res, residents, I figured two-point five, that works out to twenty thousand dollars a quarter. That's eighty thousand dollars a year that your citizens, your patrons are going to have to come up with to pay that. And if the borough does not, and they're just dragging their feet, from what I understand, it's been going on for over a year.
Oh, yeah. Couple of years. What is your monthly sewer fee?
Uh, right now it's, uh, one thirteen, and it's going to one twenty-one.
Per quarter or per month?
Per quarter.
Per quarter, okay.
Yeah. And it'll be eight dollars a quarter.
Okay.
Yes.
You know, and, and trying to get this put in perspective, the only control we have over UAJA is who we appoint to the board. So maybe with what Scott's saying, I mean, if we could write a letter, but I don't know that that would get anywhere, but maybe what Scott's saying is we should, we should have our two board members come to a meeting and we should give them direction, I think would be the better way to, to handle it, because that's, that's, I mean, but again, we're only one-fifth of the board, so even if, even if our guys go in our direction, that doesn't necessarily mean we'll get any.
I understand authorities and how they're set up, okay? But that doesn't preclude you from having voice.
Oh, yeah.
I, I understand. But kind of our hands are really tied, though. This has to, if, if it goes to court between the borough and UAJA, UAJA does, and, and we just have to go along with whatever happens. So the fact that we got that rate increase, it, it may be that the courts would find that the borough is right in their refusal to pay extra. We don't know that yet.
No, we don't. But they, they're not coming up and they're not doing their homework to get it resolved. There is where the problem lies.
I, I understand your concern. We don't, we, we can't say we know that. And I, I appreciate your comment.
That's what I'm being told.
Yeah.
Well, but, but again, whether we agree with that or we, we have control of it, I think that having our, and it sounds like there's confusion, having our two reps here maybe at our next meeting to, one, clarify.
Yeah.
And two, that we give them direction on what's going on. You know, I think that, that would be the, that would be a prudent step for us to do.
I would like, I'd be interested to hear their opinions about what's going on.
I have no idea what the issue is between the two bodies.
I don't believe, I don't understand, I don't want to know about it, but all I want to know is, you know, you're about where I can go. I, I already wrote to the other, the CDT, and the next day they published an article. So I'm going to go to the TV station next, okay? Because I want some pressure put on the borough and UAJA to get this resolved. If it's, if we owe eight dollars more, we owe eight dollars more. If we don't, I don't want to pay it.
I'd be happy to look into it and contact people in the borough that I know, and contact people in UAJA I know.
That would be great.
I will do that.
And now you're on Sheena, too.
That's, okay, that's great. Anybody wants to help me go any further with it, fine, because it's just isn't fit, it isn't right, something that's just come up, that there could be something that can move it along with public pressure in order to resolve this matter one way or the other.
Okay.
Okay?
We'll see what we can do. Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else here for a public comment on anything not on the agenda?
I would like to, um, recognize our supervisor Frank Hardy on this, on this day.
Thank you.
For his service. That shirt.
Yeah, my son's up there.
All right.
It's a relatively new one.
He, he was underwater during the Vietnam War.
Yeah.
That's all I'm going to say.
Yeah, that's, that was a good place to be, I guess.
Okay. All right. Um, any new agenda items any board member would like to bring up, put on the agenda? Obviously, we can't vote on anything. Okay. Nothing, thank you. Uh, township business, so, um, yes, we did have two executive sessions, one on October twenty-third to discuss a legal matter and personnel matters, and on November twenty-sixth to discuss a personnel matter. Next, we have the recognition of Ed Benner, former, former Planning Commission member. So Ed Benner, Ed Benner, former Planning Commission member, passed away on October twenty-eighth at the age of twenty-three. Mr. Benner served on the Planning Commission from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand twelve, offering valuable contributions that have shaped the development and planning of the township. The board wishes to recognize his commitment to Harris Township and express their condolences to his family, friends, and colleagues. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have the Mount Nittany Health Preliminary Land Development Plan.
On August twenty-third of this year, staff received from HRG Incorporated a preliminary plan, land development plan for the Mount Nittany Health Facility at the corner of Warner, Warner Boulevard and South Atherton Street. The plan proposes, in addition to the existing building and parking lot changes, to accommodate the proposed new floor area, the property's own residential office, R.O. Three reviews of the plan have been completed, the third of which was included with the agenda, as well as two plan sheets showing both the existing conditions of the site and the proposed development of the property. Review comments have been reduced to a few issues, and is believed that those issues can be addressed in a timely fashion. On the board behind you are three plan sheets. The first two are the, the existing conditions and the proposed development that you had in your agenda packet. The third one, closest to me, uh, shows the landscaping plan, uh, for the property. Thought it'd be interesting for you to, to take a look at that. Staff's recommendation.
Those, those two are the same except for planting.
Yeah, the first two are the same thing you had in your agenda packet. Staff's recommendation is to move to approve the Mount Nittany Health Preliminary Land Development Plan contingent upon satisfactory completion of review comments from the November fourth, twenty twenty-four letter of the zoning officer, and the November sixth, twenty twenty-four letter of township engineer. I will mention that Chris Nasuti from HRG is in the audience, and he'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I want to go ahead and make a quick presentation. It doesn't look like anybody's jumping around to ask questions.
I was going to ask Todd to look at this thing, the letter we got from.
Yeah, the board did get a letter from.
Christian Popovich.
Steve Popovich.
Have you, have you received that?
I have not received that letter yet.
Can you get, can you get him a copy?
Uh, she lives on Circle Drive and had some concerns about the, about this proposed development plan.
Oh, that's where it turned, okay, it turns to the Belmont, okay.
Sure. The, um, the layout of the parking lot was a, a concern that was brought up there in Planning Commission as well. We went back and, and looked at this, um, looked at different ways to enter. We believe that the current plan we have shown is the safest and most logical. It provides one access point rather than two access points, um, which would, I think, cause a little confusion if we had a second access off of Atherton Street on the circle, trying to get into that parking lot. We will, it's splitting the parking lots to keep, um, employees in one end and, um, users in the other end, but again, that created two access points with unnecessary left turns off of Atherton Street. So I think what, um, what you see there is the safest. I understand the concerns of traveling through the parking lot. We will put signage up to discourage, uh, users from going through there and make that a private entry for employee parking. This should be the safest and, um, best route for the garbage pickup as well. Right now, they come off Circle Drive, pick up the garbage back out, now they're going to come in through Warner, pick up there where he has that highlighted, and then come back out onto Circle Drive and back up Circle on their regular route.
So basically, they're going to, they're going to encourage this to be employee parking.
Correctly.
Okay. That, that was, I, I made a note of that, so, okay.
Yep.
And Circle Drive will be an exit only?
Circle Drive will be an exit only.
Okay.
Correct.
Exit, right turn or left turn? Either way on Circle?
Both. Yeah, when you come out the parking lot, there'll be no restriction, you can turn right or left.
How many parking spaces is this new configuration picking up? Just those nine on the side?
How many additional spaces? There's a hundred and three total.
There were ninety-one, I think, existing.
Ninety-one's required, I think there was.
Eighty-nine or eighty.
Eighty-nine or something before.
Okay, I'll give you that, I already went through and put numbers on them. There was ninety-one originally, there's ninety-nine now. And that was going through and putting a one, two, three, four, five on every spot.
Okay.
So there were one, there was ninety-one before, there's ninety-nine now, there's eight different.
And actually, they're adding some islands then, too, in the, in the far side?
The islands are required by your ordinance.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. The islands and the landscaping that go with them.
And currently, those islands don't exist?
There are a couple of islands there right now, two, yep. You have the, the one on the left is what's there right now, so there are four interior islands.
Yeah, yeah.
We're going to have a few interior, and then we're going to have some on the exterior as well for landscaping.
Plus, plus some stuff over here, too, for the new apartment.
The proposed building addition is that one little.
The little pied instantly.
The triangle area.
Yeah, right in there, okay.
Correct.
Okay. So they're basically squaring that building off.
Correct. Yep.
Nigel? Okay, I, I would like to address the green sheet.
Yeah.
And, and make some comments on that. Um, you know, the comment for, for this green sheet, I think the biggest part is out there, um, coming off of Circle Drive onto Atherton one way or the other. And whether they, it's the current way or the new way, the same problem's there. And that's making a left turn onto Atherton.
Oh, yeah.
That is very dangerous right there. I, I, I mean, even, even without this addition, now you, you still have that problem. I'm wondering if we shouldn't petition, and I, do we petition PennDOT? No left turn there. In other words, when you come out of Circle Drive, you can only go right, you can't make a left turn, because we all know that intersection, how bad it is before we had the traffic light changes, and we, and we still get accidents there. So we already know that's a high-risk intersection, and we've got another spot down there that we've, we've made just as bad. I would say that's something we should look at, whether we approve this addition or not, and that's, that's my comment on the Circle Drive. As far as adding eight parking spots in, in that floor space, I don't think you're going to see a change one way or the other from what, what's there now. Uh, not a big change, but I, I do think that this problem down here is, is already there. Uh, it exists, and I think it'll stay there regardless of what we do with this, with this.
Well, I, I think one alternative would be to, like, shut down that access area and make it so emergency vehicles can go through.
Which, oh, you're talking about the new one?
Yeah, well, Circleville, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Not Circleville, but Circle. And instead, send people off Belmont Drive, where apparently it's not as close to our intersection, and just say that, no, it's not a safe, it's not a safe access point, come in or go in, and so let's, let's put up some, those flexible barricades that fire trucks and emergency vehicles can get over, but tell people that they need to go out Belmont Drive, and that's a safer access. So is that a satisfactory alternative?
You're on the same page, I'm on. Yeah. You know, we got to do something, that's the problem.
The right turn, the right turn on Red and Warner, with, with turn right and red, the distance between those two.
Yes.
Is, is it was causing the, the situation on the.
I think Bruce, there's a lot of emergency vehicles turning there. Just eliminate access into that road altogether.
PennDOT's going to go for that, but they might go for a right turn only out of Circle, which, which sort of makes sense. I mean, I, I, I know that intersection well enough to realize that if you're trying to take a left out of there, you're going to end up sitting in the left turn lane on Atherton Street before you can get over on the right, unless there's just no traffic.
And the way people come, they start that left turn, go on, when they're taking a left onto Warner, they start way back there.
But it is, my feeling is it's unrelated to this particular project.
Right. I'm agreeing, I'm, I'm agreeing with that, that this, this problem's going to be there whether we approve this or not.
Way, way up here, and, and this one, yeah, that's, that's a dangerous one.
But I think, I, and, and in answer to your question, well, they're going to, we can't assume what PennDOT was, I think we lead with what Bruce said and accept if they don't allow right-hand turns. So lead with the most restrictive one, and then that way, if they turn us down, we can al, we always have a fallback.
All right, if that's what the residents there need for safety, then we should provide safety.
And it's something we probably should have done a long time ago.
I mean, so, I mean, how do we move forward from here? Because we can't just, like, make a decision.
Does that suggestion sort of cover these issues?
What's that? Well, it's, I think, I think if you talk to the people on Circle Drive, they want to be able to go in and out of that, that, that road, but I think if we're going to fix it, we have to, we have to look at it from a practical standpoint, so.
Yeah, the other escapism, you go up to Belmont and go out, they hit, they hit South End, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I say this, this is really unrelated to the project. We can't, we can't take this that much into consideration, because if all the other requirements within that.
Agreed.
This is not related.
Do we have any residents here from concern?
All right.
Well, I'll make a motion, we, we approve the, the plan.
Second.
Shall we read that? I'll read it. We would to approve the Mount Nittany Health Preliminary Land Development Plan contingent upon satisfactory completion of review comments from the November fourth, twenty twenty-four letter of the zoning officer and the November sixth, twenty twenty-four letter of the township engineer. So that is the motion. Any more discussion on that?
Is everything okay in these sheets, Todd? Everything cleared up?
Well, it, it will be cleared up in short order, yeah.
Okay. No, no major, are there any further questions or anything?
No, I think they showed fire lanes on there, so it should be, it should be good.
And Jerry doesn't seem to have anything too, uh, specific.
I think Jerry, Chris, and I will probably get together in the next few days and figure out what we have to do, and we'll get the, the changes made, and we'll get the preliminary plan in here signed, so they can submit their final plan.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, I'll call the question. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's unanimous. Thank you.
How, how do we go about doing this? Do we send that to the traffic engineer?
I'll talk to our traffic engineer about the intersection itself, and I know Ms. Popovich's letter also refers referring to a potential need for another traffic light at the entrance to the facility, and I did talk to our engineer. We already sent this through as part of the plan, and that wasn't a concern.
We got enough traffic lights. We don't need a traffic light.
Yeah, there's no need for that, um, based on history.
Just not a well-designed road originally, when they intersection on Warner Boulevard, cite this as going to left, it's just, never has been good.
All right, next is a request to update swimming pool regulations.
At your October, uh, board meeting, you considered a resident request to amend the swimming pool regulations in the zoning ordinance to supplement the requirements related to fencing, should property owners propose automatic pool covers, meeting building code standards for in-ground swimming pools. Uh, you expressed some safety concerns, but agreed to refer the issue to the Planning Commission for further discussion and recommendation. Uh, in the agenda, I put these swimming pool regulations in our ordinance, I won't read them for you at this point. Prior to the October Board of Supervisors meeting, I contacted the Center Region Code Administration and asked if any municipalities they serve allow automatic swimming pool covers and place of fences for in-ground swimming pools. According to CRCA, State College Borough, Ferguson Township, and Hack Moon Township allow for safety covers in lieu of fencing. College Township requires fencing, but makes exceptions for covers if CRCA verifies code compliance. Patent Township and Belphon Borough require fencing for all in-ground swimming pools, and that's a correlation whether or not, uh, covers are proposed. The planning, the, the Planning Commission discussed the matter at their October meeting and recommended that automatic swimming pool covers, meeting the requirements of the Center Region Code Administration, be added to the zoning ordinance as an alternative option to the existing fencing requirements. If the board decides to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission, staff will provide language for proposed ordinance amendment to PC for consideration at their meeting next Monday night. The draft language will likely mirror the text in the ordinances of those Center Region municipalities that allow automatic swimming pool covers. This is a discussion item. Um, if you decide to accept the recommendation, like I said, you can forward this back to the Planning Commission.
No, for discussion, I'll make a motion to proceed.
Proceed with.
With the.
I'll send it back to.
The recommendation regarding the proposed zoning ordinance.
I, I have, I'll, I'll make. Quick comment here, I just wrote something down here.
We need a second.
Oh, we need a second. Uh, okay, I'll second it so we can talk about it.
Okay.
You know, the one thing with the fence, it's visible. It's visible during the day, it's visible at night, and if you don't see it, you're going to run into it before you get in the pool. If it becomes in disrepair, everybody sees it, and you have to get it fixed. With these things, they go in, they're brand new, everything works fine, and they look great. How often do they need be, to be inspected to make sure that they don't fail? How, how, I mean, you put one in, and then, then it's there forever, and somebody walks on it years later, and it rusts out or whatever, and they go through the pool, and they can't get out because the cover's over? I, I still have some issue there with, with access, accidental access, I guess is the best way to put it. And, and, you know, let's face it, you know, all it takes is one. You know, we could sit there and we can have a thousand swimming pools, and everything works great, and all it takes is that one. So I, I still have some hesitation on that, and I don't know if the Planning Commission can hack that out, hash that out, or, or whatever, but that's, I'm, I'm still coming from that end, you know, it's just.
Is there. Is there.
It just doesn't, it doesn't make me feel warm and fuzzy.
Once installed, that, it's not re-inspected?
Well, I can, I can speak for Harris Township in the zoning process. Once we complete our inspection, we don't go back out to look at it, I don't know if this is a situation where the code office schedules periodic inspections or not. I doubt it, but I don't know for sure.
I'm a big proponent of fences, hard fences, huge proponent. I think swimming pools can be very dangerous, and I wouldn't trust those.
Well, and my, my, last time around, we talked about this, my thought was, you know, someone said, yes, you can prop open the gate to the fence. That's a voluntary action. You can fail to remember to activate the cover. That's not a voluntary action, that's a, a lapse of, and, and so that's where that part gives me concern. You know, and I'm a, I'm got a libertarian streak in me, and if it's your pool and you're, that's what you wanna do, then isn't my job to make sure your kids are gonna.
It's not about your kids, it's about keeping everybody safe.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, even if you have this set up, and you have no fence, and your phone rings, and next thing you know, you're taken inside the house, and little Bobby Sue next door decides that he, she, or, you know, they're gonna go over and wander around, and next thing you know, one thing leads to another, that a hard fence would've taken care of.
And, and we asked last time for some additional information on this, on this issue. And the fact that this township did this, this township didn't do this, this, that's not what I think of additional information. I think of it as being statistics that say, here's how many events have happened because someone failed to activate the swimming pool cover versus someone propped open the gate. And, and so, I'm, I'm just, I'm nervous about it. It's, it's like, you know, it's like, we need to, I, I, it, it makes me, puts me on edge, you know?
And if you look on their patent, and Patent Township in Belphant Borough, still require fences on all pools. So, they have some reservations, there's, there's reservations out there on it. It's not just that we're, we're coming up with these, it, there is a, there is a reservation out there on it.
Well, the, you know, to expand on Bruce, Bruce's comment, when you prop open a gate, there's one small opening. When you forget to put the cover on, it's wide open.
Yeah.
So, that's a, that is a big difference. And.
I, I will often let the planning commission talk about all these things. And where they came down on it was that they felt that if the property owner's gonna make the decision to go with a hard cover rather than a fence, the liability's on them. So, if liability is your concern, it doesn't sound like it is, but if liability is your concern, could be that, you know, that's, that's, you know, that's a legitimate point. If you're not concerned about liability, you're concerned about overall safety, then.
That's my concern completely. I mean, I can't sit here and say that I'm not gonna vote for fences, because if I think that that's the safest thing for our residents, I'm gonna vote for it, you know? Plain fact of the matter is like, I have to vote not only, you know, I have to vote my conscience as well. You know, I have to vote how I was raised as well. And, you know, I, I honestly believe that, that fences do, do a great job.
Well, if, look at it, just, you know, it's not liability, guys.
It's not our liability.
One life, that's what it is. Can we save one life? And, and that's what it's about. It's not about what the liability will be. All it would take is for us to do this, and, and one life, whether it's an accident, whether it's, whatever, that would be the issue.
We have.
Yeah, there's a job.
Please. Please introduce yourself when you get to the mic.
My name is Jeff Hayes, I'm a resident of Harris Township. Uh, wanna express my gratitude for your public service. Todd's answered a bunch of our questions about installing a swimming pool. Appreciate your consideration of this request. Wanna let you know, I've learned a lot through this process. Uh, I grew up, uh, when I was a little kid, we had a pool, had a fence around it, like, you know, that was the only game in town at the time. And I assumed we would be putting a fence around this, uh, this pool. What I've come to learn, um, not that I'm an expert, I don't wanna pass myself off as an expert, is that these pool covers are considered to be safer than a fence. And I share all of the concerns that you do. One life and liability, but I, I don't want a dangerous situation. And, uh, you know, when I was a teenager, we would go pool hopping at night, jumping over fences, right? And fences are, I believe the current ordinance is a four-foot fence, no more than a six-inch gap. Uh, and I get the, the point. You know, you don't want neighbors or anyone kind of falling in the pool while you're inside. The way we certainly envision this is that if we're not poolside, the cover is closed. And the only time it's open is when we're using the pool. So, uh, I'd like you to take that under consideration, although, you know, we're like the pilot test here, I get it. And whatever decision you make is not just for our situation, it's for, it's for the, the township, as you consider changing an ordinance. If it's helpful to know, this is gonna cost us a tremendous amount of money, about $20,000 more than a fence would. And we're willing to take on that additional cost because we've come to understand that this is actually safer than installing a, a fence that where a door, a gate could be propped open, someone could jump over the fence. Deer are certainly a consideration, although no one's primary consideration here. So, uh, you know, if we can learn from what, you know, surrounding townships have learned in their experience, I think that would be great. I'm a social scientist, I'm all about data, so if there are data out there, that would be great. I'm not sharing, I'm not sure that I share the perspective that there must be concerns in Belphant because they haven't changed their ordinance. Maybe they just haven't dealt with automatic pool covers previously, as far as I know. This is the first time it's come to the attention of, of this board. So, um, the fact that other townships haven't yet changed their ordinance, I'm not sure is evidence of a, of an existing concern. So, that's what I have to say, and appreciate your, your consideration.
I, I'll, I'll just, I mean. I wish you'd, I wish you could come here with some data.
I wish the data existed.
Yeah, I, I, I do too. So, I'm just, I'm, I'm kinda, I'm, I understand, it makes sense. The other side may, like I said, it's, you know, to me, yeah, someone can prop open a gate, someone can jump over a fence. I was young and stupid once. All right, so, but a pool cover, you can forget to push the button.
Sure can, yeah. I don't, I don't wanna ignore that possibility, and.
I just, so I, I want.
I wonder what sort of statistics would be enough, though, because as Mr. Harden said, really, all it takes is one case for all of us to feel miserable, you know? So, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to, to dig and, and look. I guess the planning commission must've done their homework in making the recommendation that they did. And I trust their expertise more than my own.
All right, so my, just to, is this time-sensitive? Do we have to make a decision right now? Or we can, do we have time to find more information?
Yeah, I don't think anyone should feel rushed to make a decision.
Well, that's, that's, that's kinda where I'm at right now, is like, I don't wanna be hurried into making what might be the wrong decision.
No, I don't think anyone should feel pressured or rushed to make a decision.
Yeah, that's.
Interestingly, the College Township requires a fence, but makes exceptions for covers if code verifies it. I'm sort of interested in the either or. How can you do an either or? You either do it, or you don't do it.
Yeah, that, that caught my eyes as well, I don't know.
Did they give you any background in terms of how often they grant that exception, or?
Well, I, I would assume that it would be granted every time somebody requests it, so long as the applicant demonstrated compliance with the requirements of the Center Region Code Administration.
So, if there's an exception, requested, they grant it?
I would guess that's the case.
That's, that's a strange either or.
It struck me as a little unusual, too. Why would you make a request if you're in violation of code?
So, if you lived in College Township, you could just turn to the request for the exception, and we wouldn't be here.
But here we are in Harris Township, complying with code and considering change, which is difficult.
And I'm not, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that College Township option.
Well, maybe we can bring it up with the.
It looks kinda, it looks kinda like, like when they say that, they just wanna make sure that, um, that if there's a cover that comes out, that is not CRCA code compliant, you know, if there happens to be in the future, something that comes out that's not code compliant, that they have to have a hard, a hard fence. Which kinda makes sense to me in a little bit of a way.
I, I agree, I think College Township has a good approach to that. I have, yeah. And I, I, and Mr. Hayes makes some good points. I mean, a solid pool cover is pretty much impenetrable, right? I mean, you can't get into it.
The pictures show elephants standing on them.
Right, I mean, and so, fences can be scaled, yes. So, the question is, we have to try to figure out which is the safest way to.
Let me, let me add one more, one more concern. So, you've told us that you're very conscientious, and you'll make sure that the things close every time. And five years down the road, you sell the house, you got new people, how are you gonna assure that they're gonna do it?
Yeah, I, I mean, I can only speak for myself, and I, I.
I understand.
In the path of the situation that you're in, that really, you're making a decision on behalf of the township, not just for us. So, that puts you in a difficult position, and, and I think you raise a really good question about periodic inspections. You know, if you wanna build that into code or ordinance, you know, the way our septic system is inspected every so often to make sure, every three years, to make sure.
I'd like to spend a little more time on this. It's November, not a lot of people are swimming right now.
You're not getting your pool put in the next couple months.
So, I think, I think, I think we have time to, to think about it, maybe refine, if we could like, and I don't know, I don't know the answer. But if we could refine it so that we had more assurances that we weren't gonna have a tragedy, and how these two options play off. And certainly, someone can like, say, yeah, I wanna, I'm gonna keep a fence.
Yeah, unfortunately, of course.
No one's saying you can't have a fence.
Sure.
It's rather, is this an exceptional.
Alternative.
An acceptable alternative.
Yeah. And of course, a fence doesn't provide assurances.
Do you have a private company do a pool maintenance once a year? I'm wondering if pool, pool maintenance companies do inspections on these things?
They do.
Do they do?
Yes, the people that install it come once a year to make sure everything's functioning and locking, and locks.
Is that a local pool maintenance company?
It's not, it's a, it's a.
There, there are quite a few pool companies around.
Williamsport, right?
Uh, Philadelphia, not sure.
Yeah, please introduce yourself.
Janet McCracken, I was the one that spoke to you, uh, last time we talked about this. Um, yeah, so they, the people that install it and certify it, because there are some pool covers that maybe are like ones you've seen before, they're mainly meant to keep tree leaves and stuff out of the pool. Those are not at all what this is. They build in a track in the pool, so it runs through a track, goes under a platform that gets built and gets locked. So, they're really secure. But they ask you, um, to have a maintenance, or a maintenance check every year.
And I'm wondering, like, and I, I know, I'm, I'm way in over my head, could you have a timer on this? That said it, you know, it's such an hour, we leave, it's gonna, it's gonna shut us.
Oh, no.
That seems to me very dangerous in case someone's in the water.
Someone maybe under.
Well, I said, I, I don't, I, there's a lot here I don't know, and that's why I want more information, because I want us to make the right decision for our residents.
Well, here's, here's the thing, I think where we're headed with this, and to Bruce's point, we need more input on this, you know? First off, we say, okay, you can have a fence or a pool cover. We haven't defined the pool cover. So, so we really need to know if there's some model number, there's some, you know, specific number. Okay, we're gonna allow it for this model, and this model only, we're not gonna allow it for this one or that one.
Yeah, that's in the code already, the State College.
Yeah, we need, yeah, we need to have that in the ordinance. So, we need input on this before we decide going forward, and, and we need some, and, and I don't know, the planning commission, does that like work, or, or where? But I, I, I think, I agree with Bruce, we need some more input.
I probably know my back to the same question, what happens if somebody sells a house, and they decide that they don't wanna get inspected? They decide they don't wanna pay for the inspection, they decide they don't care about the inspection, and here we are back in the same place as before.
It sounds like there are two issues on the table. Uh, one is the language moving forward, and I'm reading from the minutes, that the recommendation is that the planning commission would provide a recommendation regarding the proposed zoning, zoning ordinance text change. So, that does sound like the next step, you know, model numbers and, and so forth. And to address your point, I think, um, you know, there's, uh, certainly within your authority to go above and beyond what other townships may have in their current language. I don't know what it is to require annual or, you know, some sort of inspections.
All right, let's be clear, the planning commission is an advisory board.
Mm-hmm.
The responsibility sits at this table.
Right, I just wonder if, as is apparent in the minutes, the recommendation is for the planning commission maybe to do their work and find out what the existing language is in these other townships.
I'd like to go right back to the, to the building codes, statewide building codes, and I bet there are statistics there on how effective these things are in one way or the other, and we can.
Bring them to me.
I'd like to have a conversation with somebody in the code office that would be up to speed on this.
I know a little something about statistics.
I just, I'm just gonna say, I'm gonna say, one more thing back in that vein. That's fine, we can look at a stagnant place right now and say, this is this effective. But the problem is, is we've got five years down the line, 10 years down the line, 15 years down the line, we look at all these years down the line, how do we ensure that that is going to be used the same way, the same inspections are gonna be done, and it's gonna be just as effective then as it is right now? Because I can't, I mean, it's very nice of you, you know, if you, I mean, I'm, I'm still, I'm just assuming you're extremely responsible. But again, you know, what about the next person? What about this person? You know, I, you know, sure, hard fences may not be great, but it's still there. So, I just, I don't know, that's my, how do we guarantee five, 10, 15, 20 years down the line? Are we gonna be guaranteed that they're still being used?
Tracy, we could build that into the ordinance.
That's what I wanna make sure.
No, no problem. I mean, we want Center Region Code to inspect it, and, or have an inspection done and required.
Hold on a second. Instead, instead of putting Center Region Code, how, how much does it cost for you to have this inspected every year? Do they do it as a service charge for?
I don't know the cost of it yet.
Because, I mean, I wouldn't, I, I think that we should be, an inspection should be required, and it should be, if possible, turned into the township every year.
Just to be clear, there's no requirement currently that fences are inspected on a regular basis, although they degrade over time.
But you mentioned something about the company. The company does this.
Right, right.
So, if the company's willing to do that.
And the cover's under a 15-year warranty.
Okay, well. Yeah, we, we need to, we need to keep this moving here, we're going back and forth on the same thing. So, this gentleman would like to speak.
Yes.
Please introduce yourself.
Hi, Scott Seepers, fellow Navy. I saw that. Yes, um, no, I just wanted to echo support here. Um, I would like, you know, this consideration as well. The one thing, like, I will say about, like, your question, ma'am. The one thing like I will say about like your question, man. With this cover, if it does not work, you are incentivized to get it fixed because your pool is going to cool off. You're going to get debris in your pool. You're going to want to make that fix. A fence, you don't have the same thing. I think when it comes down to it. There's no way that you're going to be able to guarantee what you're saying. It, at the end of the day, there is a personal responsibility here that you can never, doesn't matter what control you apply, you're not going to be able to get around that. I I work in the nuclear industry and I will tell you the, I work with hazard analysis all the time and there's a general rule of thumb. A control closest to the hazard is generally superior. So I would just put that out there to consider it. Um, for me personally, I would like to put this in. It is a $20,000 commitment. And there are other, you know, situations I think should be considered. I I would still put a fence around. Three quarters of my pool. But that last part that goes across the patio, it's a problem and there's no good way to do it. So and so I would just say some flexibility here would be great. There's a lot of benefits with energy savings and other things as well. I know safety is the the primary thing. But I'd just like the support and appreciate you all bringing that up. So.
Well, let's let's make sure we get this right.
Yes.
Can you supply Mark with the the company out of Philadelphia that you work with? To get us in the circle of how this yearly inspection system works? That'd be useful to have. Are you dealing with the same company or?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
You haven't bought one yet?
Still, I'm lined up for the spring. Yeah.
Okay.
But this is a decision that that we got to make because they got to put the tracks in, you know, when you're getting the pool installed.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Stay tuned.
I think we want to look into this a little further and we will.
And do we have to pass it back down to planning? How do we do that?
Well, you did have a motion in the second, so I think you need to decide whether or not you want to send the planning commission to have them work on anything or if you want to get answers to your questions before you decide whether or not to send them to draft an ordinance.
Well, my motion was for discussion. And we got a second to do the discussion.
I was to send it to planning.
I think we need answers before we send it to planning. I think we need answers before we send it to planning.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think the more answers we have, the easier their job is going to be.
If you want to provide me at some point, you don't have to right now with the information you want us as staff to try to collect, we can certainly reach out to code. Find out, you know, from an inspection point of view, if that would be a possibility. Whatever else you want us to look into, we're happy to do that. Just let us know.
I move the table this.
I'll second that. The way we haven't done that for a while.
It's because Mark's raises another.
Motion to second the table. I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We'll keep working on it.
We will do our due diligence.
Thank you.
And please don't hesitate to have information. If any sort, please call us. Please call Mark. If you find anything out, it would be helpful. Appreciate it.
It's cooling off. You only need your pool for a while, so.
Next is the long range transportation plan update. And Messner?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ann Messner from Center County MPO. And I am here just to give you an update on our work efforts. Uh, the main thing being the long range transportation plan, which is due September of 2025. And staff right now is visiting all 35 municipalities, hopefully before the first week of February. To get feedback from folks like you. So just a couple of things. If you're not familiar with what an MPO does. Our job as staff is to stay up to date with various pieces of legislation that impact transportation, such as federal and state legislation. Keep our stakeholders up to date. We have regular meetings with our technical and coordinating committee. We send those agendas out and we also send out meeting summaries for people to read at their leisure. We also are required to prepare eight plans. The long range transportation plan is one of them. And that has to be updated every five years. As part of that programming, we have other documents. The Transportation Improvement Program, which is basically the working document to fund projects. And is roughly four years in duration. The 12-year program, basically what it is, it's kind of forward thinking, looking at what's ahead and how we can get those items funded. And then the Unified Planning Work Program, which is actually staff's task list. Uh, that is what we have agreed to do based on what we are seeing coming, what plans we have to update, those types of things. And then all of this is really for roads, bridges, transit and active transportation. And the long range transportation plan that we're dealing with right now, like I said, is to be for all modes of transportation. And that has varied a little bit over the years. But now that we're seeing ATV's increase in horse and buggy. We're slowly working to incorporate that as part of our work as well. Uh, we have to have goals and objectives. Uh, there is performance measures that we have to follow. Those are established by federal highway. The states then receive them and then we, as an MPO, decide we are going to either accept those performance measures. Or we are going to work on our own and get those approved. We don't have enough staff capacity to do something like that. So typically we accept what is being given to us. The long range transportation plan has to be a minimum of 20 years. We go out a little longer. Uh, I don't know the history of that, but that's what we do. And for the highway and bridge side, it must be fiscally constrained. So we cannot have projects that are aspirational, if you will, that will, that cannot be funded in that 20-year period. Now, we can have aspirational projects, but they're they're more like a wish list. And then if we look at transit, transit can have things aspirational. They don't have fiscal constraint. But for the most part, the long range transportation plan has a lot to do with our everyday needs. Basics, what we do, what we start with is we need to see what our community looks like. So since we're a county MPO. We're pretty small, but we also need to see what we have. So have our demograph, have our demographics change? We look at census data. What GIS data do we have available? What needs to be updated? Crash data. Every year, there's new information on crash data. Where are those hotspots occurring? Is there something that we can do to make improvements? Stakeholder input. This is stakeholder input here. So that's why we go out to the municipalities. And then equity. This is something that has been established through the Federal Highway Administration. It's called Justice 40. But essentially looking at everyone and also certain populations such as low income and minority. We put all of this together and we start developing issues and that analysis and what is going on? And is there something that we're not doing now that we should consider doing in this new plan? Implementation then becomes a big part of it. We have to lay everything out. What does it look like in five, 10, 15, 20 years? And how can we package it so maybe you as a municipality can use it potentially for a grant? Or some of your stakeholders. It is supposed to be a working document that you can use. At the end, while we are packaging this, there is a public comment period. It's 30 days. And we look to have people provide additional feedback with anticipated adoption by the technical committee and the coordinating committee. In September of 2025. One of the things is. Making sure that stakeholders are heard. And we've done it various ways over the years. In this, for this plan, we are going to. Visit municipalities and then visit groups like Happy Valley Adventure Bureau, CBICC, Penn State, uh, to see what their concerns are. We are not anticipating having an online survey. Um, the Center Region. Comp Plan right now just finished a survey. The Active Transportation Plan completed a survey several months ago. We feel like people might be surveyed out. So for this exercise, we are not doing that. There are planning factors that we have to follow. They're non-negotiable. So those are inputs that we have to keep in mind. Again, identifying issues and needs through this process. And anything that kind of rises to the top from state and local transportation infrastructure. So what you don't know is there's a lot of things going on in the background, bridge inspections, pavement inspections. That potentially provide data for how we should be looking at programming of projects. And then finally, I've mentioned this before for all modes, but we're also looking at emerging technology. Several years ago, you know, Uber wasn't necessarily a thing. But it is now. It's a regular part of our our operation in terms of the transit network. We don't know if autonomous vehicles will show up anytime soon. But even aviation in Pennsylvania, the department that oversees that is looking at how they can look at aviation. More broadly, so it becomes more customer friendly, if you will. So there's all sorts of things out there. We have to take a look at that as well and see if there's anything that might be applicable. Safety is always a priority for the MPO. Uh, we have established a safety subcommittee. Mr. Harden is on there and we meet periodically to see where we can try to use our safety money. That we are allocated each year. We don't get a lot, but if we can't use those dollars. Uh, we try to look for other dollars for for the solution. And then next. So this time around, we're, we have five questions. I'm not going to read through them. But the highlights that we would like to try and to have municipalities answer are what are the major corridors? Where are your concerns? Are they bridges? Are they highways? Are they both? Um, alternative modes. Are you, have you seen something that's changing? May not be relevant here, but out in Penns Valley, horse and buggy is increasing concern. All right, just as an example. And then emerging technology. Um, you know, traffic lights have evolved over the years and they're seeing new technology that they can apply. Is there a corridor that you have concern that maybe we should be looking at in terms of improved technology? Are there county or regional issues? You see the world differently than a planner does because we are sometimes blinded by all the data. Is there something that, you know, you're noticing, you're seeing that we wouldn't necessarily pick up on? And then land use. And while it's not transportation related, land use does impact transportation. So are there any places where you're concerned about the development pattern? Where it might be impacting use of the roadway network, those types of things? And then this is just our staff contact list. Um, just in case you didn't know, we have staff both at the Center Region Office. And we have a single staff person at the County Planning Office. This has been going on for several years. When we became a countywide MPO, uh, the commissioners at the time said, well, if we're going to be countywide, we want to have at least one transportation planner in our office. So that's why we're we're a split office, but we as staff meet regularly and work together. Did you have any questions?
I'll put forward a comment.
Sure.
I were, I'm concerned about some of our. Transportation alternatives. And I'll use bicycling as one. And we have areas where we have, the network isn't complete. And so you get on a bicycle, you get so far and suddenly you're like Harris Township, you live here, you can get out on the shared use path. You get down to the borough and suddenly it's like, you're on your own. And so those kinds of completing those networks, I I think should be a priority for us. And I'll just, again, I use bicycling as an example, but I think we could, we can expand that. And making sure that we don't, again, just like abandon people like, all right. You got this far. Now, good luck.
Good point.
All right, I'm done. I'm out of here. Are we done, Jern?
The long range plan and what, that's where that stuff comes in. You know, if you go on the Center Region Bike Plan. It it is completed, but but obviously funds aren't there to complete it everywhere. That's why when we, we talked about this 322 connector, that's why we want that that bike path going out to Tussie. Because, you know, and that's when it happens, when major projects are done. That's when you, from our standpoint, that's why we say, no, we want a hiking path in there or we want this developed with it. So that's, that's one of the things we do. And and when she said all these things and you saw all those studies and that, that's where it becomes harder than Chinese arithmetic. Because, you know, the other things she did, she had tips for years, get this one. But it happens every two years. So you're like, I mean, it's all over the place. So they are, trust me, that is in in all of our discussions. We talk about that. We've talked, one of the big things we're talking about right now is rail. How do we, how do we get this area engaged with the the new route that's going to be going through Lewis Town on the train? How do we get that done? You know, so there's a lot of things like that. How do we make it easier to get to the airport? There's a lot of stuff like that's in the long range plan that that we look, we work on all the time. But again, when, at the end of the day is, how much money do we have?
Is it difficult to get to the airport?
Football game.
You're talking about four lane, four lane lady, four lane, coming off 99 right to the airport. How do we do that?
Why do we want to?
When we, when we talked about this.
Philadelphia, it took me an hour.
We talked about this 15 years ago, the same issue came up with MTR. And there was a really good concern that we were going to get a bus system that went from State College to Lewis Town. Private sector. That's as far as that went. No one, no bus company ever picked that up. We supported that. Ford didn't, didn't take it. Trailways didn't take it. Whole Transportation didn't take it. No one picked up on that opportunity. Maybe when we get the second train, and that'll be in 2026, maybe that needs to be looked at.
If you looked in the, if you looked in the cog budget for the MPO, the rail, rail studies in there.
Well, there's CBS report on Channel 10 tonight talking about the 2026 new train route.
So we do have that, a trail, a rail trail. Rail access study proposed. What that looks like. We'll have to work on a scope and see who we can attract in terms of being viable participants in the process.
The likelihood of getting a rail here versus going down there is much easier. Topographically.
We'll have to see.
The electric bicycle issue is sort of interesting too, because there goes a lot of education that needs to take place with. The electric bike being integrated into traffic. And who has a right of way, where, when and how?
Well, electric bikes are considered bikes. So they are permitted to be in the travel lane.
Then there needs to be a long learning curve on electric bike riders in terms of how they fit into the system.
No, our schools need to get, do a better job of teaching physics. Cars are bigger. They hurt.
Well, if it's all right, I'd like to hand this out. This has a little bit more information for you.
I've already got one.
Oh, you're passing down? All right.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, oh, there's, oh, you got a whole bunch of.
I have a packet for everybody and then a packet for the minute book. So the the first page is a flyer that we've been handing out to all the municipalities. Um, the second page is actually the visits that had occurred in previous iterations of the long range transportation plan. I think it was 18 and 23. Um, and then the fourth page is just the questions I went over. And then finally, the last page is. Projects, uh, project submission. So if you have a project that you really think as a municipality. You would like to be submitted for consideration. We ask that you fill out that form as well as the questions by March 14th. If you don't have anything, that's fine. Um, but we're, we're trying to encourage thought about future projects. And this might be a bit of an experiment, but we're hoping to get some responses from the municipalities. And that is all I have.
I have one question. When you look at things like the intersection of Bull Avenue and Lewis Town Road and, yeah, there is safety, but when you request to have a slip lane removed. Which it's my understanding that like, handout doesn't like slip lanes anymore. I'm not particularly fond of it, but because I move over to the left. But how does, how does a study like that work? Because there's an enormous amount of traffic that comes in from forty-five onto Bull Avenue.
Yes, so what happens is they have to essentially do an analysis of where kind of the intersection, how it works. And then kind of going beyond that intersection to see what the impact is. I can't tell you like how far. But then they also look at, has there been a change in the traffic patterns? And is there something in terms of technology, in terms of signals, maybe reorienting the intersection a little bit that would allow for the slip lane to be removed? There is some discussions preliminarily, Branch Road and South Atherton to do that. Because of the level of congestion, generally speaking, that's happening, but also the distance cyclists and walkers have to go to cross Branch Road there to see what we can do to try to not make it worse, if you will, but also to help with all users of the roadway. So that will be our first experiment to see if we can actually, if we can see what positive results we could have from adjustments.
Interesting. I've been a supervisor for a long time and so involved here. The two slip lanes that we have in Harris Township, both involving either under forty-five coming in. I don't recall any accidents occurring due to the slip lanes in the entire time I've been an elected official. And they really do keep traffic moving. And I was so disappointed when Pendott decided to remove the slip lane at twenty-six and forty-five near Pine Grove Mills. That is just, doesn't make any sense at all. It's stopping traffic that doesn't need to stop and creating more congested in the intersection. So I don't know who, who's dreaming up the idea that slip lane should be removed and when they actually keep traffic moving. And apparently safely, at least here.
I think part of it is who is the road user and what is, we're not only building and accommodating for vehicles, but we're also looking at pedestrians and cyclists. And there's been a little bit of a shift about how we look at roads and who, if anyone should have priority. And should we be leveling that out a little?
Take your time, it's a small community, you'll get there.
That's why it's a long range plan.
We're talking about twenty fifty-five here today.
Oh, I'm done. Not my problem.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. You could say that the end of next year. All right. Hey, proposed ordinance three seventy-one, home-based business regulations. We had a.
Mister Chairman.
On that earlier.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to move to approve ordinance number three seventy-one exist, exist establishing non-impact and little bit impact home-based business regulation.
Second. Call a question.
We have no more discussion. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That sounds unanimous. Thank you. Now we're moving on to the big item of the evening, the twenty twenty-five township budget.
The board of supervisors held several work sessions in recent weeks to finalize the twenty twenty-five township budget. The budget should be tentatively approved. So the public review and comment period can begin. After tentative approval, the budget must be made available for inspection for at least twenty days prior to formal adoption by the board. The public hearing and formal adoption will take place at the December ninth, twenty twenty-four, board of supervisors meeting.
For discussion purpose, I'll move the motion. Second.
Okay. Well, discussion. Didn't you want to discuss, Danny?
Question.
What?
Call the question.
I'll call the question.
Call the question.
Call the question, okay. All in favor of tentatively approving the twenty twenty-five Harris Township budget and scheduling a public hearings? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, well, that was quick. Thank you, okay. Resolution twenty-four twelve, adoption of the twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-nine capital improvement program.
I do approve resolution twenty-four dash twelve, adopting the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine capital improvement program.
Good job.
Second.
I think Bruce beat it. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the Bull Avenue pedestrian crossing design engineering services.
So in January of this year, the township was awarded an RLE grant from Pendott to designate, design and install a bike pedestrian crossing point on Bull Avenue at the Pennsylvania Military Museum entrance and Old Bollesburg Road intersection. Reimbursement agreement with Pendott was recently completed, allowing the township to move forward with completing the project. The township sent an RFP to several traffic engineering firms requesting proposals for engineering design services and received responses from McCormick Taylor, Panone and Trans Associates. Staff reviewed the proposals and is recommending that the board appoint McCormick Taylor to provide engineering services for design and implementation of the project.
Move the motion.
Huh? Second.
The motion reads, move to appoint McCormick Taylor to provide engineering services to design and assist with the implementation of an enhanced crossing point at the Bull Avenue and Pennsylvania Military Museum entrance, Old Bollesburg Road intersection. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. All right, model solid waste ordinance.
So at its October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four meeting, the Center Region Council of Governments General Forum referred the revised models municipal solid waste ordinance to the municipalities participating in the regional refuse and recycling contract for adoption. Model ordinance was prepared in twenty twenty-four by a solid waste ordinance working group that consisted of representatives from participating townships, the cog and the center county refuse and recycling and refuse authority. The motion included a deadline for adoption of March thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and that is to allow the ordinance to take effect prior to the commencement of the twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty refuse and recycling contract. A copy of the revised model ordinance was in the packet as well as summary of the process and revisions that were completed to prepare this. The model ordinance was based upon the existing municipal waste, solid waste ordinance and with modifications to address regional issues such as dumping and to assist in regional and county solid waste management goals. So if you are generally satisfied as a board with this model ordinance, staff can prepare it for adoption at a future meeting prior to March thirtieth. If you want, if you have any questions that you'd like Shelley motto from the cog to attend or you need more information prior to us putting it on an agenda for adoption, be happy to go ahead and schedule that as well.
The only thing I hear is the satisfaction with the twice yearly bulk pickup versus the two calls per year to have someone come.
You're saying you're dissatisfied?
That's, that's the, that's what I'm picking up through the grapevine.
We've heard the same, and that has more to do with the contract itself.
Oh, yeah.
But that was.
It's part of the whole system, so. That's, that's, and I know you've been much more deeply involved with this than I have, but my, my first concern when I heard about that was like, you know, when we have a pickup day scheduled for the township, I know that around, you know, ten o'clock midnight, people are driving around picking stuff up and taking it and recycling it and using it.
That's.
And, and if it's something that's done, I call and say, come get this stuff. There's not going to be people out there, so are we increasing our?
Overall waste.
Waste into the landfill rather than promoting recycling by, by folks that like to do that.
Yeah, because people come by and collect cords from micro raves and they use the copper. They'll take all kinds of stuff that people lay out and they will recycle it or they'll sell it back or, you know, all that kind of stuff.
Oh, I even put it on display so it's obvious that this is nice stuff. I remember there was one, there was one year when no one took my stuff and I was like, what's wrong with my crap? It's good crap.
Ninety percent of what I leave out is gone.
Yeah, so that, that's, that's a concern.
Yeah, well.
And I, I'd love to see that as part of the conversation.
Let, let me ask you a question. You know, you can still call and get your, your bulk waste taken twice a year. What if we had a township, you know, where we put out that, hey, we're going to put metal and copper out that we don't want and, and just, you know, advertise it and then see who comes around and picks it up. It'll be on this such and such a date.
Yeah, I just, I think.
Something we just do, you know?
I don't know.
Let the scavengers pick up what they want.
I think that's something we need to, we need to be cognizant of.
I, I agree, I thought I agree with them. I never had a bulk waste day, like growing up, and when the first time I had it here scared me to death because all these people are driving around and I have two little girls. I had no idea until I called my mother and she said, like, this is a thing, this is a thing. You know, Western Pennsylvania, this is a thing. And then I got.
And I furnished, I furnished, I furnished an apartment that way when I was in college.
But I mean, I like it a lot now because I think that.
But those are feelings when, is when they don't take your stuff.
I know. That's why I, that's why I display it. I sit out there and I say, hey, you want that? That's good. That's good crap. Take that.
Do you put a sign on it?
I do put a sign, yeah.
Good, medium and not good?
Yeah. So anyway, anyways, I would love to see that be part of our conversation.
That's not part of this whole, this whole discussion.
Unfortunately, it didn't come up in the bids that way.
Well, we, we.
But they could modify that. We can, we can say, you want a contract? Change this clause.
Contracts been signed.
Approved. I think we approved at a cog meeting several months ago.
When you only have one bidder, it's very difficult to.
All right.
We had two.
Well, yeah, but the other one, the other one was even less.
So I can take my crap and put it on.
I do, I think that's bad.
Just barricade the road and somebody will take it.
Okay, all right.
It is, I agree with you.
My concern.
Yes, go ahead, do what we need to do. Bring it back in.
I don't have the time and energy to take it for scrap and recycle it, but other people do.
Yeah.
It's good to do that.
I do my best.
Anyway.
Okay.
So that was just a discussion item. So moving right along to the manager's report.
I did want to draw your attention to a few items in the report here. Item number one, I'll note in there, if you hadn't already heard, that the governor and the state had passed Act ninety-four, which changed the allowable compensation caps for township supervisors. It's something that would not take effect until the beginning of a supervisor's term. But it, if it's something that you want to discuss at a future meeting, please let me know. I know that PSAT was going to be putting out some model ordinances to allow for that to be easily implemented, but.
Don't have a dog in this fight.
So, yeah, if you're midterm.
They won't apply to any of them.
It won't apply to anybody until you're, if you run for reelection and are elected again, that's when it would apply. So it's any time your term starts.
That's kind of silliness, isn't it? Cause all of a sudden you've got somebody incoming if you decide that you're going to increase it. You've got somebody incoming who's going to make considerably more than you are, you know? And but just, I mean, it's not much, but it's just a silliness, if you know what I mean.
You can't vote to raise your salary.
Yeah, we, we put it up before. I'm not sure when the last time happened.
Couple of years back.
But then again, I'm also, I'm also a proponent that I, I should be donating my time as well. You see what I'm saying?
Oh, well, so you can give the money back.
The big increase we had went from over five thousand. Before that, we had fifteen hundred a year. That was really skimpy. That we're, that we're getting.
Yeah. That's rich, that's a non-issue.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I don't.
I don't need an answer this evening, but it's something to be thinking about.
I don't think anybody's too enthusiastic. And even if, so it permits supervisors to be compensated on a per meeting basis, but that would still.
You get paid for one hour a month.
It seems to me it would still.
How long, how long have we been here?
Until a new term.
It also would not go into effect until a new term and it can't exceed the amount, the maximum amount.
Yeah.
So, you know, even if you do it on a per meeting basis, it can never be more than the amount, the cap.
What's, what's the difference between does not exceed the new threshold versus getting forty-one ninety divided into monthly if you have a median month?
Well, I guess if you were to have more meetings scheduled and you had it based on forty-one ninety and two meetings a month and you only held, you know, eighteen meetings a year rather than twenty-four, you actually would end up getting less money and that's how that would count.
Okay, fine.
So, yeah, you don't need to make a decision tonight, obviously, if you want to change your compensation or future compensation, I should say, for future supervisors, but I would just need to know if I should put it on the agenda in the future for discussion.
All right, Phil, I feel good. I feel absolutely inclined to say that I, I'm kind of happy at the, the level we are and I'd rather the township have the money than to make. I just. Maybe that's the wrong way to say it, because we're a small township.
And no one's getting rich.
No, and I just feel like that's excessive.
I agree.
And I think that I'm happy with where it is. There you go.
The only thing I would say on it that I thought about, and again, I don't care if we stay where we're at, like everybody, we're not making any money at this. But I, I think that it should all change at the same time. In other words, you don't want to have one supervisor making one amount and another one making another amount. So however you got to do that, so if.
That's state law.
Well, and if that's the case, then just leave it where it's at.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like it's community service and it's nice having a few extra bucks to do it, but yeah, that, that's a big increase.
I enjoy telling people I get paid two hundred dollars an hour.
Yeah, no.
Then there's the punchline.
Right, not really.
Question, the, item number five.
Yes.
The, the sign ordinance and stuff like that. I know the immediate push has faded since we got through. Since we got through the election. Where are we going with this?
Well, as I noted in here, the planning commission did not feel they wanted to recommend any changes to either the size or number of personal expression signs allowed. And I did inform them that if they make that recommendation of the board, which we have not formally brought that back to you because there are other things we're going to discuss with them about other sections of the sign ordinance that need change. I did point out that the board expressed an interest in having these numbers changed to something different. And, you know, that you might very well send it right back to them and ask them to do it.
At the next, at the next planning. Commission meeting, tell them from the supervisor, they're a bunch of wimps. Take it on. Take it on.
Keeps bouncing back and forth beginning, nothing so.
Well, I think they felt as though they had already.
I'll tell Ger that.
Done a lot of research and developing the ordinance to begin with, and there was some research done. I, I don't disagree with that, but there are a lot of different ways that other municipalities have handled it as well, so.
The only complaint.
The only thing I read there, like I read through the whole thing, the whole meeting. And I mean, no offense to you, but I, the one thing that somebody says with a larger property, having a larger sign, I don't agree with that. Sorry, Bruce.
I just didn't care with the, the number, the quantities.
The number was my issue, yeah.
Have as many as you want. Cause you know, I go around and do my little surveys, there's like fifty signs in a, in a, in a, somebody's yard and then there's one in the next guy. That's one vote. That's one vote. That's one vote. So you can put a hundred, I don't care. You want to put a hundred but signs up, put a hundred signs.
Well, we're going to keep working with the planning commission on some other changes to the ordinance. You know, I certainly can bring this back up from again. Ultimately, if you don't agree with whatever recommendation they provide, you can decide to have staff still change it to what you would like it to say.
Sounds really like we're pretty agnostic on this.
I think, I think January's coming. We can scold them in front of the T, on TV.
Okay, thirty is back on the.
I don't know.
Meet with the planning commission.
I don't know. I just thought it was a good idea because it was everywhere that day.
Well, no, but no, I'm talking about our second meeting in January, we're going to meet with the ABCs.
Point number seven.
Yeah, this one.
Point number seven, I.
Yeah.
I didn't really like the idea of moving it to noon.
Yeah, I can't speak for CNET. I know that, I don't know if Deb reached out to them or they reached out to Deb, but nonetheless, they were concerned about me with probably coverage at all at the meeting on the second, which is why they threw out the noon time as a possibility.
Well, I'm retired, so noon doesn't make any difference to me, but I don't, you can't make noon, can you?
I'm worried about.
I can, I can make noon, but I can't be here for very long if we do it at noon.
But I don't think it's fair to the public either.
But it's, the problem is, it's the public.
Right, the ABC applicants only can speak to words.
Three, four AM.
Oh, you're going to be away, that's right.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
It'll be in Australia. Don't worry, I'll, I'll scold planning for you. Has there been any question of anybody else?
I'm not sure. I imagine that other municipalities have been asked to change as well. I mean, they have to coordinate a lot of meetings on that day. So that's, you know, limited cruise.
Well, it says a second class township required to meet the same day, well.
Well, it says a second-class township required to meet the same day, well, duh. We, we made two, so we, someone else would be rotated, we keep changing here, and it doesn't seem as old as our.
I don't think, we haven't actually changed.
I think we met at seven last year and the year before.
We were four a couple years. We were at four o'clock a couple times, but I don't remember when.
I know last year was seven.
Let's, ABC applicants, are we looking at a lot of those coming in? Where, where are we?
I don't know at this point, I haven't heard back from everyone, but we certainly have potentially several openings on the planning commission, potentially several openings on the planning committee, so we could have a number of openings. I know we also have a, an opening, opening for our SLO representative as well.
Are we likely to have more candidates and openings?
I would hope so.
Well, that has been an issue in the past, can you, has been an issue.
Can you news that about that?
Yeah, I wanted to first get an idea of who, like, what positions we needed before I started to advertise saying what we need. I don't want folks applying for a committee that they might be interested in something different, but they apply for something that we don't have the space for, so. But, I mean, I can certainly get back to CNN and tell them that, you know, seven's what you.
We really want seven.
We want seven.
Okay.
Tough pattern is a change.
Yeah, if CNN's not here, we can still meet.
Yeah, we can do our thing, but it's not requiring that they be here. They're on their own.
Alright.
Mail it in.
Any, anything else in the managers report?
Unless they have any other questions for you.
Alright. Alright, the approval of vouchers should be next, indeed it is.
Move to approve, where is it? Got to know the number.
Twenty-four-ten.
You got it right there.
Yeah, it is twenty-four-ten, uh, for the amount of two hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-three cents.
Hey, any discussion on the vouchers?
Let's pay our bills.
We're gonna, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna hum the Final Jeopardy theme here in a minute.
We're waiting on you to hit the final.
She's looking, she said she wanted. Oh, okay, I thought, you were looking through it like I want to look through it before I comment.
No, we're going to look through it.
Alright, okay, very good, alright. Well, all in favor of approving the vouchers, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous. So COG committee reports, executive committee, nothing extra other than the COG agenda, human resources. We did have some discussion about leave of absence without pay policy. That, you may remember the general, the executive committee recommended to the general forum with the approval of the new personnel policy that we hold that particular section, because the attorney recommended we take it out completely rather than what we had. And the discussion at HR recently was that we would actually like to keep it in, but maybe, you know, redo it a little bit to, to allow some flexibility, but at the same time to minimize the possibility of an employee complaining and possibly filing for discrimination because they didn't get it or something, so. That, that's going to be ongoing yet, and then we had a report about health insurance rates, they're going up. How about that? So, they're gonna do what they can, use some fund balance to keep the employee contributions down or costs down for the next year, and, but it's going to be an ongoing problem. And that's all for that, and climate action and sustainability committee would have met today at noon, but apparently, since it was a holiday, we put it to nine o'clock tomorrow morning, and maybe I'll be able to zoom in, maybe I won't. I won't know until in the morning, so. That's all I have, so Dennis, facilities.
Facilities, we had an update by Christie Owens on the grand opening date for Mill, the Whitehall Regional Park. I had an update also on the welcome ceremony at Millbrook Marsh. And our new facility coordinator is going to put some material together with respect to projects that were planned in twenty-four, projects that were budgeted, what was completed, and what is being revisited in twenty twenty-five. So we'll, we had an opportunity to actually meet Sam. Very impressive young man. Okay, facilities, land use, we met cooperatively with CRPC. Main topic was the Put-in-Town Interceptor Special Study. You remember there's a new sewer line system being put in, in Millbrook Marsh with two alternatives, and so we talked about those alternatives, and I think we're probably looking at number one, which is, they're both multimillion-dollar projects, so we'll, that won't be done until twenty twenty-six. Had a comprehensive plan update, and then CRPC held a separate meeting because they needed to move on the Ferguson Township Light Industry Research Ordinance Change. So they had a separate meeting, and then we came back together and concluded. Good, good discussion, though, on the Put-in-Town project. Most, most interesting. Okay, solar power contracts are here, and we're meeting Wednesday to begin processing those.
Okay, next Dennis, so Bruce Parks and Parks and Parks.
Parks Capital Committee, you'll be shocked to know, good meet. Parks Governance Committee is thinking about this idea of having a park advisory committee that's not the Parks Capital, but is a Parks Governance. It's kind of, you know, it's up in the air because the, the authority is the governing authority. And so the idea is, like, let's have some elected officials who have obviously fiduciary responsibilities weighing in and being updated on things, maybe like every three months or so. As you probably know, I'm not enthusiastic about that. If you want to give me your input and push forward, I'd be happy to, to like incorporate that and represent all of us. I am not, you know, I'm not enthusiastic about it. I think the governance committee is kind of split on it, and, and a lot of them are like, don't like it, but I want to be a good citizen and support other people, so maybe if everybody else wants to do it, I'll vote for it. We had, at the end of our last meeting, the question was, shall we vote on this now or should we put it off for another month? And the vote was, was one person said, let's vote on it now.
Do you vote on it now?
No, we didn't vote on it, but that was my, I'm like, like, I'm done, I'm ready, you know, let's, let's.
Oh, then do your voting.
Let's, let's, let's make a decision.
All this discussion has ever been thought about allowing the authority to operate as an authority separate from COG as UAJA does and the Water Authority, and that's a very common model across Pennsylvania.
The, the, the distinction between the Airport Authority, the Sewer Authority, the Water Authority, et cetera, is that all those entities have their own way of fun, bringing in funds.
Correct.
And, and the Park Authority does not have the ability to bring in funds.
I think they need, they need to look at their service fee system, the same as other authorities do.
They're, they're currently dependent upon all our municipalities supporting the operation of the parks. And our park system is not a, it's not a profit-making entity. It's a service entity, it's providing services to the, the people that, that they love and enjoy. It's probably one of the most forward, you know, obvious things that we do as a community, both Harris and, and the Center Region. And so it, it, there's a lot of support there. The whole, again, the whole conflict is they, the authority can't raise the money themselves.
If they put a service program together like the Sewer Water Authority, they could do that on a separate budget.
Why would you want to do that? Because then all of a sudden, you lose all control. That authority speaks for itself and takes what it wants at that point, where everybody else has no control over it. We don't, we don't, we have any say about the services, that what we have to pay for the Water Authority or the Sewer Authority. They come to us, why would we want a, a sector where we're serving the public, where we are, where they're not independent from us paying already to become demanding of all of us?
Oh, you were taking, taking, taking it off our shoulders.
And there's public services that we're providing, there's public services that we are providing that are important to our people.
Yeah.
Here, I'll give you, I'll give you one easy example. We subsidize swimming classes.
Yes.
That's a good thing. If you don't have those automatic things over your pools, you want your kids to be able to swim to the edge, and, I mean, so, so those kinds of skills and stuff are important. We subsidize other activities that, that are good for our community. It, it, it should not be thought of as like, here's a enterprise, here's a profit and loss, you know? If you can't pay the bills, then we'll, we'll dump flag football or whatever. So it's, it's more complicated than that, but, and as we've talked about, and we continue to talk about, we need to make sure that they're efficient in the way they're doing things.
Can I, can I go back to, let's see, I was going to make a comment on that one, two times ago, when you said you'd like some input?
I don't.
About, about a governance.
Of the governance?
The, the governance advisory board thing?
Yeah.
Okay, remind them all, you and I, you come on two years before me, but I think in our time on the board, think how many hours we have lost on Whitehall Regional Park, and that's because we had thirty-two elected officials all having different comments. So if you put that advisory board in, you're going to gridlock everything that's over there, so I would tell you to just keep pushing to get rid of it. We don't want that, that's going to kill everything.
And Frank, you and I ran against each other for election, and we agree.
Yes, I agree.
Oh, no.
I know, it's, the, the sky's going to fall. Um, yeah, so the authority, the authority, um, as, as Danny said, the, we're looking at with the Whitehall Road, a soft opening as soon as is possible.
Yeah.
That, that, you know, we get, we get the necessary approvals for the occupancy.
Twenty-twenty-three, what is it?
And then a, then a grand opening with all the hoopla and, you know, and cut the cake or whatever later in the spring.
Still working on some school moderation, apparently.
Yeah, 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 there's.
Which have been re-engineered or un-engineered or mis-engineered or.
It's, yeah, it's a technical, I mean, you know, all those people that know what they're talking about are interfering. We'll get it done. I'm good, Frank, you're up.
Okay, Frank.
I'm starting to step on.
Finance, finance, we meet on Thursday, and the last meeting we had, we all went through that with the budget process. Connector, we're still, I, I think they're still in the process of doing their thing. MPO, you guys had, we don't meet till the end of the month, what we had there was pretty much all you needed. So in answer to all those questions, I'm, I'm good. I, I had, didn't do a whole lot this month.
Not at all. Great, the public safety.
Nada, and nada next month either.
Nada.
I don't know what they do.
Oh, you're good.
Did I say that, that was bad?
When you took that committee for man, you don't know what they do.
I don't know what they do.
Will you do it there?
Yes, sir.
Move, will you, Karen?
Got it.
Second, second.
Second.
Yeah, well, okay.
There's a folder for.
We're out of here.
I have a question for Mark.
I gotta wait for the red light, because you can't ask for a red light.
Why, it doesn't matter, I just asked.
Do you want the?